Okay, welcome to the July 24th. Have a school committee meeting. And I call the meeting to order. Get a motion?
Motion to approve the July 22nd meeting.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go. First is on the top at the approval of the minutes from the June 22nd meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
And I do have one amendment unless Sue Geza already changed it. On page one, under Decisions/Actions where I typed "School Committee decides." You do decide a lot of things. But you just decide. We're just going to eliminate that mine.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments otherwise?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
A motion to approve the school committee minutes striking that one sentence. School Committee decides.
I'll second that. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, any adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
No adjustments to the agenda. There'll be an additional handout that you all have in front of you. The revolving accounts report and a handout about some additional minor revisions in the HES handbook that I'll take you through those as we go through the handbook revisions.
Okay. Great. All right, let's start with the handbook revisions and that's presentation first item.
Yep, so in your packet you have the summary of revisions to each of the handbooks and then in a separate file you were sent the actual massive handbook. These are many of these things like changing the date or updating language, cleaning up grammar, or minor revisions. Some of the things that would represent more substantive changes also reflect things you've already discussed or voted on. So for example, on page four, and these page numbers will change once everything's accepted, then we'll clean up all of the formatting. Athletic participation and school cancellation. We discussed how that would be something that would be at the discretion of the superintendent with the input from athletic director, the principals, and ensuring that everything is safe for students to practice or play. Updating advisors' names, that's pretty straightforward. AP courses, rather than list them because they're to be determined based on enrollment and interest. If we don't offer something and a student wants it, they always have access to virtual high school. Cafeteria, we increased the lunch prices. Also, the federal government requires us to have a floor on breakfast prices so that those would need to be $1.75 and they were previously $1.25. So we would need to update the policy which is also included for a second revision, but that revision would have to take place, would have to be in the policy and it's on page 14 because page 14 includes actual language from the policy. So we talked about how the federal government required that floor for lunch prices and I did not include the breakfast prices. I did not have that information in there. And then there's just additional detail provided as to what's included in breakfast. We talked about on page 16 that we would not withhold report cards due to outstanding debts and that's also reflected in the policy changes in Policy EFDA. Language and grammar revisions. The student dress code that's inserted beginning in the track changes on page 27 is the student dress code that we discussed at our last meeting and that Keith and Heather watched the committee through. We had some language revisions under discipline. So in some cases we just simplified it. For example, under one of the disciplinary affections where we had had previously behavior determined, if it's determined to be behavior disrespectful and disruptive to the school environment and/or it just would be treated as insubordination if you've been given a reasonable directive to desist from that behavior and you refuse to do so. Addition of bias incident, so we also are including on page 31 that bias incidents which are, I'm sorry, it's on page 32. So any type of behavior that stems from a place of bias, discrimination, we wanted to add that to the handbook.
I was just curious, who makes that call?
On what constitutes bias? So first, well, a student can report a bias incident and then anytime any allegation is made, even if an adult observes a child engaging in a behavior, we immediately intervene if it was something that was, they were saying something or doing something that was disruptive or disrespectful to other people. But there's always due process and discipline. So then the student has a chance to have a conversation with the principal about, no, I didn't say that, I said this, or that's not what happened. But immediately if somebody observes or believes that something like that has taken place, a student could report it. An adult may observe it and then say, you know, you need to talk to somebody in the office about this, that's not okay, what you said was discriminatory or not acceptable. But all students always have due process. The policies of bullying and sexual harassment for the attorney must include that people can report things not only in writing, but they may report bullying incidents verbally. So before it was an expectation that people would put a bullying complaint in writing, that's not necessary. We've added language around gender identity. On page 62, we talked last meeting, we did a vote for one dual enrollment exception and then I said I'd bring a change in handbook to you, that's on page 62. That change in language says the superintendent may approve a ninth or 10th grade student to participate in dual enrollment at the recommendation of the principal. That's what we had included there. The attorney made revisions regarding firearms, the section on page 64. We just cleaned up, we took out years that no longer apply. Pages 72 to 78 are changes in health information. The health information is the same for both schools, so in HES some people might say, well, why is that in there? And Renee Dennelfeld, our nurse leader, just did one health information section. In your packet, she has a summary of what she did and why. So she's responsible for that section of the handbook and she went on to explain in some cases, she made a lot of changes that had to do with ensuring that we were in compliance with standards and just after talking with the nurses in both buildings about what makes the most sense. And we had to replace, it's no longer "No Child Left Behind," it's "Every Student Succeeds" Act. We no longer have a senior privilege allowing students to be in hallways without passes, which is too hard to monitor. And the weapons language on page 96 was revised per the attorney, similar to the firearms language. Those are the revisions in the Hopkins handbook.
Do you want us to individually take actions on this?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the Hopkins? And there were no additional ones provided today, right?
Not for Hopkins, nope.
Just for HES. Great.
I thought it was all straightforward, we ran over the highlights before, so thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't make for riveting reading. Tell me about it.
I had her just wrench it away from my kid's hands.
Yeah, sure did. I looked forward to it every summer, I'm like, yay, yeah, yay, my favorite thing.
Good. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the revisions to the Hopkins Academy handbook for 2017 to 2018.
Second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.
All right, so now we're on to the elementary school tree, which seemed very simple and then I just drew a little extra monkey wrench in defense. I did. Let's just have to make this site. So on your, what I put in front of you, additional changes. So I'm going to start there because I'm going to go and, I'm just going to go in order in the handbook. Page eight, we don't post routes anymore in the paper, we send an email to parents. So we changed your handbook to reflect that, we no longer put them in paper. Page nine, students may have water bottles on the bus and that was something, we just had this firm, you may not eat or drink on the bus, but in fact, you may have water bottles on the bus. And we had previously, it was prohibited to open or close windows, we eliminated that. So page 22 to 29 is the health section that is the same as what we see in the Hopkins Academy handbook. The cafeteria, the changes are almost the same and actually, yeah, it's unmarked on page 28, but the breakfast price, the grab and go language about breakfast, the same as you saw in Hopkins, the breakfast price at $1.75. And because it's a grab and go breakfast, it just says that the cafe staff are there to receive students and there were some changes to how we collect money at the elementary Page 29, we had to change language around free and reduced lunch applications to comply with regulations and law. Same thing around report cards, that we would not withhold report cards. 39, oh, 39. And this I would always invite, you know, we look through these documents every single year and I try really hard to catch these things, I really do, and I'm so glad that Dr. Wickman and Joan Wickman caught this. So anytime, because many of these documents are old and just get revised, revised, so anytime we have things like this where we were using language that wasn't student-first language. So the special needs of students, we're matching the special needs of students with teacher strengths rather than using the bright special needs students. So I just would encourage you to also be on the lookout where there are old documents that we are, still have that present, that we get rid of it. So thank you, Joan, for catching that. Elementary banned practice would, to be determined, it's not, he may change the time of it, so that's why that's to be determined right now. Page, I'm skipping that. We have some changes on 47 to ELL and Title I and these changes reflect requirements in the federal laws for Title I. And kindergarten program revision on page 80, 48, excuse me. This is, we just have our full day program for kindergartens. We don't do half-day kindergarten. We do full-day kindergarten. And our recess rules, we did some changes to the recess rules because next year, actually, a family that did choice out, was in our district last year, choice out this year, the reason that they chose out, I had an exit interview with them, the reason that they chose out is, the primary reason they cited was a lack of diversity in the student population. And so they chose into Northampton. And I was really thrilled that that parent, after her son was at Northampton, she called me and asked me if I'd like a tour of the school because there were things she really liked about it and she wanted to know if I would be interested in seeing the things that she thought were really effective and inviting and that she liked. So I went over there, she picked me up, we drove over there, I met with the principal at that school. We talked about many things, but one of the things that the principal was adamant about how wonderful it was, was having, one, having children play before recess and having smaller groups at recess. So next year at Hadley Elementary, students will play before they eat. Seems like a minor thing, but in a lot of ways. One, the principal in Northampton reported that she saw a significant decrease in behavioral problems. And she said, I don't think it really had anything to do with the fact that they, the order of things except for if, if I'm playing and going back to class, I'm just going to talk about the student that I was, not the students we have at Hadley Elementary. If I'm at recess and the next stop is the classroom. Now, if I have a problem on the playground, I am all about getting an adult to solve it and perhaps in a protracted and rather litigious way, right? But if what's next is lunch, I might make some decisions about what I can solve on my own and what I can, what I can let go and what really needs intervention. So she said there was a marked decrease, I don't know if we'd see that, but a marked decrease in reported incidents of disagreement and things of that nature. So it was working well for them and that was one of the things. There were some other ideas that she gave us that we are, we're looking at and interested in implementing, but that was one thing. And so you see, there are a bunch of changes, several changes to the recess rules because we're doing recess differently. And, let's see. And the policies for bullying and sexual harassment must include the option of reporting verbally or in writing. And that is everything in the HES handbook.
Any questions or concerns with the HES revisions, including the ones we got today?
Neither a question nor a concern, but a comment that I'm really excited that you're trying something different around recess and having students get their energy out before eating and then, and sort of like calming back down and then re-entering the class ready to learn. Yeah, I'm excited about it and I'm happy that they'll be smaller. So we'll only have three recesses, the kindergarteners always have their own, and then grades one and two, grades three and four, and grades five and six. So before we had three grades out on the playground. So that will also be, there'll be fewer students, which will, I'm sure, help too with troubles on the playground.
Great.
I had a question more, just a lack of knowledge. So the student-parent handbooks for both schools, I guess both, but I guess in particular the elementary school, how do we, if a parent or a child is new to the district, how do we inform them of where to find these? Do we have them sign that they read them? Do?
Yes, we do have families sign that they've read and reviewed the handbooks there. So we ask parents to sign that, we ask parents to do that, every year.
Every year?
To read that they've read and reviewed the handbooks. And we don't provide a paper copy. I know at Hopkins Academy, you guys have to help me out here, we don't provide paper copies. We tell parents where they can find the information online. And I can't recall now at the elementary, we may...
They used to.
Do you know if they used to?
Two years ago, but I can't recall what they did as of late.
Yeah, we might also say, you can always request a paper copy and we're happy to give it to you, but I believe we direct everybody now to online copies because it was so much paper.
A lot of paper.
I know, I've never seen one sitting on my kitchen table.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't expect to, I think that's a good thing. I was just curious if we had parents sign that, indeed, I did read this, so that way...
Yes, yeah, we do. And it's a separate signature page for technology, appropriate use of technology at the policy that then also requires an additional signature. Yes.
Okay. Great. Anything else for a motion? All right, if not, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the proposed revisions to the Hadley Elementary School student and parent handbook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
One last handbook, all right.
Well, let me just ask, before we move to the handbook, can we take an action on the breakfast prices since we just approved those increases? Because it looks like we need to vote on that as well.
Yes, yes.
So that's to get into compliance with the...
Federal funding or state funding?
Federal.
Federal funding.
Increased breakfast price affected this fall for to $1.75.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure, motion to agree to the increase of the breakfast prices from $1.25 to $1.75 for the school year 2017.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I'm sorry, I should have said, full disclosure there, that the ceiling for the floor for the federal government is $1.71. I originally have that in the handbook and Diane Zacken, Food Services, said you're really going to create a nightmare for the normal public. It was penny's to think about that. So it's $1.71 is the, but it made more sense to make it $1.75.
Okay.
It's the employee handbook. Non-union employee handbook. Okay, so the non-union employee handbook, these changes again are very, I think they're very minor. Of course now I can't find what it is, my employee handbook, my non-union, here it is, goodness gracious. What we tried to do here is, so there are some increases. We eliminated outdated language, some changes to how employees, how much time employees can accrue in terms of sick time, so take you through those. Eliminated any outdated language, starts with that. For example, teachers aides, we have educational support professionals, oral interpreters, health aides. Some bus drivers were included in the non-union handbook, they've since organized, so those are the kinds of language changes that we updated. On page nine, for example dates, when we let people know how they have to give us, when they can use vacation time, obviously changing it from 2015 was our previous example, we just updated the examples so they were easier to track. On page 10, one is allowing, one unused personal day may be rolled over into accrued sick time. That is something that previously the school committee had voted and it's common in our contracts now, but we haven't updated our handbook with what that. And then the other thing, you can see where previously it says, this is accrual, this is not time, this is sick time that can be accrued. This is not time that would be paid out if an employee were to leave. They were previously at 150 and the bargaining, the bargaining unit members, so those employees who were organized had an accrual ceiling of 200. And because I don't necessarily, I support labor organization, but because I don't necessarily want you to spend a year organizing yet another contract, it just made sense to...
Thank you.
Just make these all in line. And page 12, the leave without pay, FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, requires that employees have exhausted all of their personal time and paid time, and so we just make that clear in here before they use that. And again, just updated for example dates. So those are the only changes to the personnel handbook.
Any discussion on the employee handbook? All right, motion to approve?
Move to approve the revisions to the employee handbook?
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I've aged your app five from action items.
Wow.
Okay, so that is all the handbook revisions, correct?
That is, that is all of it.
That's it? There aren't any other handbooks?
There's really? Because I don't know what, I will repeat that for the rest of the year.
Okay, next item is capital plan.
No action is required on this. I believe that I sent you all a copy when I sent this over to Town Hall, but we had discussed it at the last meeting when we were trying to just remember what was on the capital plan. And so I misspoke because 1718, I thought it was $400,000 for fields, or maybe it is. Am I dr, no, I'm not reading this right.
It's locker room.
It's locker room.
We did not submit that to the town for.
No, we did not.
So Fields was TBD.
So $15,000 to start and then Fields doesn't show up again. Yeah. Fields doesn't show up again.
So I don't know if it needs to be on our capital plan because we're not asking the town specifically for the, the capital, we're asking for it from CPA. Does that matter?
I want to verify that with David because for me, I always go back to, my assumption is that the town would want to have a clear picture across the town of all of its properties or all of the things that are in need of, what they need to purchase, improve, or renovate, to have all of it. You look at that, you prioritize that, and then you identify potential funding streams based on the nature of the project. And so I would think that they would want to know everything because at the end of the day, although it, as we talked about last time, it's from this funding source, CPA, but it's still all town money that's raised through taxpayer revenue.
Right, so I think we had a dollar amount in there at one point. We must have taken it out and we were signing an estimate.
Right.
So if you can get clarity from David whether that's something that we should at least represent on here, knowing that the funding source may be through...
Yeah, I'm not sure how this is used.
Yeah.
So I can see the value of frankly saying it's CPA's request to ask for $400,000 for those school fields, assuming they approve our request. Because, you know, the next question is, do we want to try to make a pitch to stick to this timeline and raise, go to the town for the girls locker room? My gut tells me no, that we've asked for a bit last year and we're successful, we're going to ask for more through CPA. But I'm curious what others think. I assume there'd still be time to go, maybe not.
No, warrant articles aren't due until August, so there would still be time, I believe. Yeah, I'm sure there's still time.
So let me just ask a clarifying question. If we do go through the CPA to ask for money for the fields, would that be in this next round or would that be next year? So it would be an ask from CPA to utilize CPA funds, which they're under pressure to use because, and they have not used, so that's a different issue. And so really it's whether we have an ask or not. And so my question, Annie, for you then is, given all the gender equity work that's going on here at Hadley Elementary, at Hopkins Academy, does it make sense? The women's locker room issue has been ignored for quite some time. What is the total dollar impact?
It's just an estimate of $400,000.
Yeah, and Chris can probably weigh in a bit on the, on that estimate. I mean, that really was a placeholder.
It was, yeah.
It was down at 2009.
Yeah, it's fairly old and, I mean, the problem is you can't just go and ask somebody to spend many hours to come up with, you know, an accurate estimate and then tell them, okay, well, we'll come back to you in five years, you know? I mean, it's very difficult, so we're kind of keeping that. When you guys are actually ready to move that forward, and if you are, we can certainly push to get some kind of better pricing for it, which I would recommend because you hate to say, yeah, we think it's $400,000 and then have it come in at six or something, you know? If it comes in at three, nobody minds, but, you know.
You're pretty accurate about the air conditioners.
Fingers crossed.
He's become an expert, hasn't he?
Yes, he is an expert, I see.
So, Hummer, just picking up any points? Do you, one could argue, well, they're separate pots of money, we could go and ask since we have been...
Right.
You're right, it's been on that list for a while.
A very long time.
May I ask, when they were last renovated, just I know, I was not part of these discussions at times.
1853?
Well, that's when it was like, you know, when I was in school. I haven't been in there, you know?
It definitely sends the wrong signal to people who are trying to attract to the school system that we have such a dilapidated women's locker room. And athletics is pretty important to our town and our school, clearly not over academics, but still, it's just the wrong signal to send.
And just also out of curiosity, when was the last time the men's locker room was renovated?
That has been renovated, not since I've been here, but that was renovated.
I don't know when, but if you walk the two, there's a definite difference between the two of them.
Yeah, I can get you, I can find out for you from Mr. Mish, but I do know that men's locker room has been renovated, no, I don't want to say recently, it's been renovated. I don't, I don't know if anybody, I don't know if the girls locker room has ever been renovated.
And that was my next question, is why was the men's, why were they not done at the same time funding?
I have no idea. Strategic importance, emphasis on, I mean, let's face it, there's an inequity as it relates to male and female opportunities. I mean, let's put it this way, there's, I know on the sidelines for baseball, there's always an issue around like use of the scoreboard when both games are taking place, male and female, because there's not, scoreboards are whole, for example. So there's this perception around men's sports or boys' sports having greater weight over women's and I don't have a female athlete in my family, but I think it's wrong. There should be parity between.
Right. But I mean, I was not on the committee when the decision was made to renovate the boys' locker room versus what was.
This was well before us.
So unsure, but you know, what was even going on at that time with regards to sports and how well teams were doing. The only thing, just to look at the whole picture too, that I would ask is the paving of the parking lot, given all the work that's going to be going on back there in the field... the paving of the parking lot, given all the work that's going to be going on back there in the fields, should we reconsider when that is done to be like the capstone ending thing after all the big front loaders and machinery have come through? That if that shifted another year, because I just don't know how it syncs up with the different phases.
Yeah.
That maybe that's a $200,000 ask that shifts into a future year if we're going to propose a $400,000 ask for this coming year.
I was actually going to ask if you could switch the parking lot with the bus. You know, and move the bus up to year three and the parking lot to year four. Just because we have, I mean, I got an email from Tricia that we have a bus with 120,000 miles and waiting another couple of years, you know, that would start to get expensive. And, you know, we just painted the parking lot lines a couple of weeks ago. They're certainly going to be good for a couple of years. That coupled with the fact that they did buy the road out front. And a couple of years ago, we did the repair on that drain that was sinking and the odd hump that was in the middle of the parking lot. You know, so I mean, it is much better now and it could probably hold off for a couple more years. And that way we could, we could wait until the fields were done certainly, because yeah, I'm sure our equipment will do a number on it.
Paul, how does that sync up with like, I'm sure that as part of the unveiling of phase one of the new fields, we'd want to have a lot that at least is, you know, not completely torn up. Right, so I don't know when the projected timing of completion of phase one is.
Well, so assuming we get the, say we get the funds this fall.
Yep.
Need to start in the spring and then they could be finished by summer or fall. Then again, use of those fields will be limited, delayed for another nine to 18 months, given the turf.
Okay.
So we're talking, and then, but then, so if you put that into 2018, 2019, you theoretically could, could start trying to plan phase two, get the money for phase two.
Does it make sense to shift the lot to 1920?
It does, the paving.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So maybe then by swapping out those two, Chris, then we're also, you know, we just have less of an ask in year three and we can lead out with this ask in year two for the locker room, the girls locker room. Which I think to your point, Humira, you know, if we're really talking about the whole package here is to, you know, look, you know, we're renovating athletic fields, it's exciting, and look at the work that we've done in the women's locker room as well. That, that's, to me, that makes sense to package those two together as a message, as part of either, you know, fundraising or attracting students here.
So I'm going to ask the, I don't know buildings that I well question. So there's, there's Fall Town Meeting and Spring Town Meeting. We could put the girls locker room ask in this year. In terms of actually doing the renovations, does it make sense? Because there's, there are warrant articles both in the fall and in the spring, correct? At the May meeting also. So when we put it in the fall, are we, are we going to be tearing up the locker room during the school year or would the goal be to tear it up over the summer? I'm not trying to be prejudiced, I really.
Oh, I think summer makes sense.
So my concern is just having two $400,000 asks for sports for the school and one warrant.
And feasibly, we're not going to touch it until next summer anyways. So we could stage it so that the CPA warrant hits the fall, the women's locker room hits the spring, the bus, the following fall.
So if we do that, I just want to walk you through this in terms of fiscal years and the, well, I guess do I move the fiscal year or does it go where the ask goes? Does it stay, so the $400,000 for the girls locker room, although we would update, that would also give Chris a chance to get better figures?
So this would be spring.
This would be spring of 18. So I'm leaving it in year two?
Right. But then whatever comes in underlying item number two, right, HA Athletic Fields Phase One. If you put something in here, that would be fall, 17.
So spring and then this is fall. And then in year three, I have $14,000 for the new serving lines with drains. Is this still something that we're looking at?
Yes, Diane Zach had requested that actually to remove. It's basically a sanitary issue where she just wanted to remove the lines with butcher block and things like that and get a drainage system installed so that it would basically just be kept cleaner.
So I have $14,000 for serving lines with drains in year three. I have $120,000 for a bus full-size school, bus replacement. Then in year four, I have $200,000 for resurfacing the parking lot. And in year five, the external grease traps.
Sounds good.
And that, so on the fall warrant will be the CPA request for the field renovation. And then we look to the spring warrant to have the girls locker room. Right, and it was this time to try and get better figures. Okay, about how many students do you think park?
In the lot?
Gosh, do you have any idea?
In the lot?
Yeah. About how many students and how many faculty are using the lot? I don't know, I could find out for you, but I don't know.
Well, we're talking an upper limit of those juniors and seniors.
That's true.
Which is what, about 50 students?
Uh, so let's say maybe 70, somewhere, yeah, somewhere between 50 and 80 students.
And how many faculty, faculty and administration?
So, gosh. 45, I suppose, teachers, I'm not adding in my, maybe, maybe 45-ish.
Does the lot get reconfigured at all in your plans?
We touched the lot.
Okay.
I mean, we did early on when we were debating whether, what to do with the additional softball field.
Yeah.
Those plans that go anywhere.
Okay.
So typically, I'm trying to remember if you voted the capital plan every time. That you have?
Yeah. Let's do it so that next time we get asked for it, we have record of having approved one.
So I'm going to say it for the last time. We still have, we've taken care of the network. The 16, 17 items obviously would fall off, right?
Yeah.
And on 17, 18, I have fall athletic fields and that will be $400,000. And I'll put a note in parentheses CPA next to that. I have spring.
What, do you need to put it on?
Oh, I'm going to ask David.
Yeah, okay.
So can, I guess we'll vote the capital plan with the understanding that if David says he wants all items regardless of funding source. Because I too am not entirely sure how the town uses it, how they use all the capital plans. I feel like in their master capital plan, there are other items on there that they would use CPA funding for. Right, when I've seen, but I couldn't be mistaken about that, so I'll ask them. And then spring, girls locker room, and we will have updated figures with that. So it'll say $400,000, but with the in parentheses, TDU, to be updated. That will bring it back to you. In 18, 19, the $14,000 and the 120, in 19, 120 for the bus. In 19, 20, $200,000 for the resurfacing of the parking lot. And then finally again with the grease traps.
So let me just ask, since this now, I mean, we're trying to keep this as a five-year plan. And if we're going to drop off year one, we haven't talked about what might be on year six, whether there's anything, you know, that maintenance are typical that we need to get on there. Would it be better to kind of proceed under this direction and bring it back to the meeting?
Sure.
To talk about what we could add on there, what makes sense and vote on it then?
Yeah, we can talk with, we can talk with Jeff and I should think about that too.
And I'm thinking we'll probably need another school bus by
Perfect.
what would be year six on here, but really year five.
Perfect. Better thinking, thank you.
Okay. Was there anything else on technology that we had? I'm trying, going back to the technology plan. Did it go out this far? Like, because I know that there's maintenance and just keeping things current.
I think, Annie, correct my recollection. I think we included all that we needed to do to strive towards a one-on-one. Is that?
Yeah, we have in the, in the technology plan, that's our aim, is to get to a one-to-one environment. And I believe that these purchases in our current article will get us pretty close to that. But the other thing that we'll do as part of updating is sit with Mike and make sure that we've taken into consideration things like the placement.
Gauging.
Right.
Okay, and if there's other suggestions that you would have, whether it's, you know, like the grease traps, right? I think we put that on there as this should be a recurring item. Because I know we've talked about the grease traps before.
Yeah, yeah.
If there's other things that I just want to make sure we don't overlook, that we kind of get on there as the maintenance.
Definitely.
Okay.
May I ask one last question? When, when, do we know when this school was built?
That's embarrassing that I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay. Tara, do you know? Not that you were here, that was a manipulation at all.
I ask because I've had people comment and question the, sort of like the integrity and
Investing in.
Investing in the school itself. I mean, clearly the elementary school is upgraded, it's attractive, it attracts many parents. It's sort of, it stands for what we want at the education standpoint. And I, when I look, compare that to Hopkins infrastructure overall, it's clearly, there's a disparity there. So I just ask about the, how, how long ago was it that we invested in our overall infrastructure here?
There was a renovation that was done because it's referred to, that if I walked down one of the hallways, I could find it. But I can certainly get that information and bring back more information about the building. And then if there's an appetite to even have a discussion about what kinds of opportunities are available through Mass School Building Authority, I'm happy to bring that information in August.
Does that work like with the library just got those matching loans?
Well, I don't want to say they match exactly. Um, so Massachusetts School Building Authority can create significant financial incentives for people to borrow money sometimes at very, very low cost or almost, or they do support some of the building. Yeah, so they, they do in some ways, you can't, a district or a community can actually receive funding to help support it. They can borrow at extraordinarily low cost. So there are a variety of options. They have renovation programs, they have school build programs, but I'm happy to bring more of that information back for, just for you to get familiar with it. Yeah, I think it's a good question.
It's good to know what our options are, right? If we, if we want to attract more students from other areas schools, we want Hopkins to Stanford, sort of like the, you know, best, most inspiring setting for education, so it's good to know.
I'm happy to bring that back.
Okay. So since we're not going to vote on this here, we'll bring it back for the next meeting. Anything else we need to do with that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, personnel report is next.
Just one minor change on a resignation. We did not have our educational support professional for help. We did not have a one-to-zero. I didn't want you to think that I was just one people at one-to-zero. That was a one-to-one. But in some cases, the, the needs of a student have changed. And so that's why the staff, it's not a reduction force or reduction in services. It's that people who are assigned to particular educational plan, that plan has changed. I am sorry to say that one of our educational support professionals in kindergarten, a wonderful employee, Kate Connor, has submitted her resignation. I believe the last child just graduated from Hopkins Academy. She's going to be working, I think, most of her time with her, with their family's law firm. And so I'm happy for her and very, very sad for us. We had a .29 math position. Again, Peggy Kelly is somebody that, wonderful, she's hired since I've been here. She came to us from private schools in Rhode Island and had been stepping back in her workload from a 1.0 to a .29 and has decided that she's, she's done with teaching at the moment. So we have hired, and we had a speech and language pathologist who had resigned last year. We have hired a new third grade teacher, our new art teacher. We've hired a speech and language pathologist and our fourth grade position we've hired. We have some internal transfers going on and because of those internal transfers, that's created some additional vacancies. So the first one for the educational support professional at Hopkins Academy, that ESP is actually going to be the one-year substitute for Ms. Barton. So her position is open. Ms. Bannock retired last year. Mr. Connolly is moving on. I actually think he might be physically moving. And Ms. Kostick for a part of the year will be doing her teaching practicum. So she will be at Hattie Elementary School, but she cannot be in ESP because she's pursuing her teaching certification. The kindergarten aide I just told you about. And we continue to, sometimes we need transitional support services for our students who are out in the community, our 18 to 22-year-olds, and so we're looking for a transition coach.
Can I ask a question with this one? I know in the last personnel report, there was the BCBA position.
The?
The, for James, I can't remember his last name right now.
James Noka?
The ABA tech, you mean?
Yeah, no, no, there was the, like, the BCBA who was shared with Granby.
Yes. So, yes, so that individual has resigned. I'm just, so just to be clear about that, it's actually Granby's employee. I probably put it in here just to keep you apprised of things that's actually not a Hattie employee. Granby, we pay Granby for our portion of the services. I spoke with Carol Hepworth, the special education director in Granby today. And she is scheduling interviews for Monday, next Monday, the 31st. And we have candidates, so we have applications, we have candidates, and we're interviewing them on Monday. A week from today.
So the agreement still stands? And so we'll get the same number of
Yes, nothing will change when we agree on that.
hours out of the agreement?
That's correct.
And the new SLP, the new SLP that's certified in SLPs?
Yes, yes.
And it's an FTE 1.0?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Instagram updates.
Sure.
All right, it's time for our public comment period. Well?
They're grateful we started at six.
Yes.
Wait, speaking of which, I missed that whole thing. I wasn't here at the last meeting. Why, why did we start a half an hour later?
To offer a little bit more flexibility for folks who want to come and hear the meeting. For folks who would like to attend on behalf of other committees in the town. Yeah.
Is this, is it sort of a pilot, are we testing that?
We are, we agreed to try it out.
For how long? Because I was really happy that we went to 5:30. It seemed that we were
I think we should try it out for one more meeting.
We, we, we agreed, we agreed trial out through the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we decided.
So we've got August, then we can, then
And yeah, that's the summer. Either it's been a horrible failure or a big success.
Yeah. Okay, let's find out.
Okay, business manager of work.
Okay, so first of all
Before you start.
Can I just?
No.
Yeah, that's right. You're stuck here with that last time.
Yeah, I just, no, it looks good now.
Chris is back.
I'm all ears.
Can we start with the revolving accounts?
I'm all ears.
Well, I know you want to highlight the revolving accounts.
Are they making money in the capitol?
I have to say, I
Chris is back.
I was away last month, I did watch the meeting. And, and I saw some, some comments and I think I heard my name once. And so I just needed to point out that
You did this to me.
When Ann presented the budget or the account balance for the lunch account, you can see the abysmal $5,000 negative balance.
Yeah.
And look when Chris presents it.
I will tell them, I called him in as I was typing in it. I said, come into my office and listen to this. And even I was struck by how juvenile and adolescent I sounded. I got to this and I said, really, Chris?
And in, in her defense, the only reason it wasn't showing up here is because this report was showing it as of 5:31 and I did the transfer, say on like June 15th or something. So it wouldn't show up on there. I did verbally tell her, hey, I moved $30,000 from the lunch account into the local budget expense and I guess she just assumed it was going to be on the report.
She did.
She'd have some fun with it, so. She'd have some fun with it, so. So as you can see, now, the athletic revolving, it's, it stands at $15,000. That's going to take a big hit with the scoreboard in the gym. So I think it's going to come down. It'll probably drop by nine to $10,000, so. That's one that will change by quite a bit. You can see the lunch, obviously, is, is very healthy again. There's a fly around here.
Yeah, I know.
Preschool revolving, that took a big drop. And, and really, the reason for that was we have the teachers that were paid through the summer that are paid out of that account, and they got four, well, they got their pay, their last paycheck plus four more for the summer, times two teachers. So you can see that, obviously, that's going to hit the account at, in the month of June. Student activity also, you can see, dropped by quite a bit. We had the New York City trip, that was $15,000. $4,000 to college board, $5,000 to yearbook, $2,000 to nature's classroom. So, again, big expenses, a lot of field trips and stuff toward the end of the year that got paid for. But I just wanted to really fill you in on why you saw these declining balances. We assume they'll move their way back up again.
So I'm sorry, Chris, where did the lunch money come from?
And, and actually, I have something else to add about the lunch money. I moved $30,000 of expenses from the lunch account to the local budget. You know, we, we obviously had to bring the account back up to the positive. We can't run it in the negative after June 30th. And hopefully, this will be enough that it will remain positive throughout FY '18. Plus the fact that we've increased the prices, that will help a little bit as well, so. Fingers are crossed. That being said, I did get an email from Diane Zach the other day. She's been chasing down delinquent accounts. We are still $2,000 in the hole with money owed to the lunch program. It was for, this is, as I mentioned before, a tremendous amount of work for her, but she is still sending, sorry.
You know, I brought that fly here.
She attacked it.
I brought that fly. It's Peggy Zach's about the lunch thing.
You know, she, she got it down $2,000, but still, there's, there's $2,000 out there that's owed. And obviously, with the way the lunch account is running, $2,000 would certainly come in handy. So we'll continue to track it and see how it goes throughout the summer. But, you know, that's where we stand right now.
Is there anything else through the service that can be implemented to try to recoup that? Like, I remember when we first rolled it out, we were kind of learning, oh, they could send these kinds of reminders. And I just don't know if we've exhausted all possibilities in this, I forget what, school lunch.
Yeah, the point-of-sale service.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Boy, I mean, things that we could do. I, I can't really think of anything else.
I mean, do they have a thing where, like, if you re-up your kid's account that you have to pay the past due balances? Or are these, are these outside of the POS?
No, they're, they're within the POS. That's where she gets the reports of, of account balances.
Yep.
You know, it, it gets very tricky, obviously, because, especially at the elementary school level where, you know, the child, you can't really tell the child is ear... You can't really tell him or her, "Hey, your, your comp balance is negative." You know what I mean? It's, it just doesn't work well, obviously, in a line full of kids. And so, you know, then they track it and immediately send notices home.
Yeah.
Because we have, I would say, most of the email addresses of the parents in our system. Diane gets them, sends emails, and they, that continues throughout the year. It's just that final push when the end of the year comes that, okay, you know, the school year's over, you really have to pay this up now, you know, that, that she pushes on it. And, you know, this is, this is all she could get at this point.
I don't think you can replenish without settling your balance. I think the only way you can do that is to bring in cash. And then it's outside of the POS system.
Right.
I think most have to settle the online balance before they add money to it.
So this would be an issue of, the child continues to charge lunch and the adult is not going in to replenish any of the accounts.
Right, and maybe someone is sending cash or bringing cash.
Yeah.
Pay for it.
All right. Yeah, that's too bad.
Have we talked to any other school districts to find out how they might deal with this kind of stuff? And learn from their sources?
Yeah, so I'll present, I'll pose that question again. I will tell you, Heath, that it's kind of the bane of everyone's existence. It's really hard to keep lunch programs operating in the black. There are some cases where they are. But I'm thinking about when I meet with the superintendents at the Collaborative for Educational Services, and I'm going to say the majority of us are constantly, it's operating in the red. And to bring it into, to balance it out, they take from the operating budget. But I will send out another email and say, "Has anybody figured out how to make this improve on this?"
All right.
So if we can just move on to the general budget reports, which are about nine pages long. We're closing in on the end of the year. We've made a number of entries to either use up all of the grant funds, obviously, the lunch entry of $30,000. Just, you know, moving money around here or there. I, I still have to do one more entry to transfer expenses from the local budget to school, I mean, to circuit breaker, because we can only carry over so much money in that account. So I will do that transfer as well. And I am now just waiting for reports from the town accountant to tie out our expense report to theirs. And we should be in good shape. I, I actually got them on July 1st, went through, and, I mean, it's, it's quite a process because, you know, you, you run them and you compare account balances, and then, oh, this one's off, this one's off, and you start to look. And, and what I end up doing is I have all, every transaction of the town side in Excel, and I run the general ledger in our side, and I just start highlighting cells in green if we both have them. And basically, anything that's left, I know, okay, there's, you know, something wrong here. And so we've, we've gone back and forth. We found, you know, an expense from Russell School Building that the town had charged to our account, and of course, we didn't have the bill. A real tricky item that we really have to try to get our hands on are the expenses for the school buses, either repairs, gas, especially repairs. What happens is the bill gets sent to the town hall. The town hall processes the bill in payroll and pays the employee and charges it to the school account. But the bill never makes it over here. So what happens is we, you know, we ask for reports from the town, and we try to match them up in the same way again. And, and it's, it's always playing catch-up, because the bills are always paid before we even get to them. So what we're looking to do, and I know Mary asked them again last week, is, please, send the bills to us. We will process them, and then in our transfer to the town, everything will automatically go over there. So we're, we're working toward that as well. It's, it's been a problem for a long time. And, you know, there's some resistance to it because it's, instead of just sending everything to the town hall, now, every other department's stuff would have to go to the town hall, and ours would have to come here. But we're hoping, you know, that that can certainly work out. But if you look at, you know, the final page again, it's a scary balance that we see on here. At least it looks scary, it really doesn't bother me. But only because we know, you know, it says minus $533,000. We had approved $681,000 of school choice money. So we're actually using less school choice money than we thought. We're going to carry forward, say, another $140,000 or so.
That's great.
Of school choice money. So, yeah, we'll just be better off for next year. Always nice. And those entries, assuming I can get the reports from the town, we'll make those in the next week or so and just close out the year, so. Always...
What's the end of the fiscal year?
June 30th. So all the expenses have been done.
Yeah.
You know, at this point in time, we, we have that mad rush of chasing down bills. We ended up having seven bills that we still haven't received, so we had to encumber those. Most of them, I think four of them were from WB Mason for supplies we ordered, and, you know, a partial order came in, but not everything. So as those items come in, we'll mark them off. And we assume most of these will be done by the end of August, certainly. Most if not all. So that's always nice, you know, good. We encumbered $60-something thousand, I believe, last year. This year, it's $3,600, so we, we chased down a lot, and thank God for that.
Chris, just to ask you on the expenses, would it be difficult to add in, if not monthly, just even every other month, our school choice balance and just...
Oh, if you'd like, I can put it on the revolving account report.
That would be really helpful.
Sure.
I mean, stuff like that to know that, okay, we're spending less than what we had earmarked.
Yep.
And just knowing that fluctuations, you know, can happen at any time. It would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's tricky, because I have all that in my head, but that doesn't feel good, so.
No, well, it's not in our head.
It'd be good to see that number knock out.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I can absolutely do that, no problem at all.
Thank you.
And the last report, I mean, it's kind of an unexciting report, I guess, for lack of a better word, is the grant report, because there's just nothing left except for the circuit breaker money, which we knew we'd be carrying over anyway, so. But again, always good to spend all that grant money by June 30th, especially.
Would you mind handing me those ones? My pen just died. The folder's behind you.
Oh, sure.
Your pen somewhere around the packet.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know.
I know you've touched on it before, but as far as grants for the following year, I, I know you've mentioned it before, but I just can't remember. Which ones we can expect to see again?
We would expect to see all of them. Well, the 701 is gone, the last one.
Yep.
The 391, you can see we were at 61, 388, we're at 44,800. So that's slowly being phased out, but that's what we'll be getting next year. The rest of them will all still be there.
They'll be there, but they'll probably be a little bit less. So I do know that our Title I allocation has decreased by probably about, our allocation, I think, is about 10% less. So that'll be, it's a little bit closer to $60,000. Title II also went down by a couple of thousand dollars. That was across the board, those federal grants. And, and that had to do with the fact that it wasn't so much of those grants, there were other grants that the federal government isn't funding. And so the state had to take a little bit of everybody's pie to continue those programs that they had other, they had other, other money for. So we didn't get hit too badly, but some districts really got hit. And we won't know about 274 or 298. Those allocations will probably be posted, I would say, next month sometime. We haven't heard, I haven't gotten any dismal emails telling us they'll be gone, but they might be slightly less.
And just as an FYI, to put your minds at ease, we got 65 and 14 between Title I and Title IIA. Actually, so it comes to about, it comes to about $80,000. And we budgeted 73 in next year's budget. So we already budgeted in a decrease, so it's not, we have to make up that money.
Great. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, school committee reports. Negotiations. Well, it looks like I've got the bus driver contracts here to sign. That's all done.
Great news.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other active...
Well, not until the teachers come back. So we did the tentative agreement of the ground rules for units A, C, and D. And then when the staff are back, we'll start scheduling negotiations.
Okay. Good. All right, policy. This would probably be the appropriate time to talk about the revisions that were recommended to the policies.
Second reading.
Yep, this is second read. We talked about these last time. Some of these are policies, some are handbook, right? Pieces that were infused, no?
No, so what you're looking at here...
Are they all leftover policies?
Yeah, they're all your second reading on each one of your policies. Change in title on homeless liaison procedures, Hopkins Academy athletic eligibility. That language also does show up in the handbook, but it's a separate policy. Advertising of the schools, this was the one proposed by attorney Adam Dupre that you all discussed last time.
Yep.
That you still have, just, you'd be voting on the proposed one. That's what you would be accepting. And it shows how it's changed from the current policy, it was still in your packet. And the food service account management, delaying the issuance of report cards, transfer cards, that language was taken out.
Right. Just on that bigginess, homeless liaison procedures, number one, the director of student services of student services.
Oh, well, that would be helpful. Let's give that a, thank you, thank you, thank you for touching on that.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns, revisions on the second read for the policies? Okay.
Okay, so the fun of voting now?
Yeah, let's get, we'll need a motion. Can we do it as a batch, or do we need one for each one?
Sure, no, you can, you can do it as a batch.
Okay. We need a motion for the, all of the batch policies.
So a motion to adopt the proposed policy amendments?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Bye. Okay, otherwise, the policy committee, we have no other updates. We'll meet again in September, is what we talked about?
Yes, yes.
Move on to the...
Another big, that's great for me to... I was all excited, and then, yes, that's great, I'll be reading a quarter of the policy amendment.
Okay. All right, finance and tri-board. I did not go, I haven't been to any recent meetings since the last one.
I think it took you to July 12th, did you?
I, I didn't either. I was hoping you'd get somebody, yeah.
Well, we, I, we'd communicated a bit with David Nixon on email, and it didn't seem like there was anything pressing for us to...
Yeah, I don't think there were any agenda items that specifically spoke to the schools. I don't think so.
Yeah. And we're still on with the August special meeting, right? There's a special town meeting?
The last town department head meeting I went to, you may have more information, but it sounded, when the town department heads got together, from what I gathered, it was the town department heads, the select board chair was there as well, David Nixon, and it sounded as though they were not intending on doing a special meeting in August now, that that was going to change, that they wanted to provide more information for the voters before having that special meeting. That's, that's the last I heard, but I, I don't know officially where they left it. That was the last one that was up.
If you're reaching out to David on the other topic, do you mind just asking him if we've got a meeting confirmed?
Sure.
Otherwise, I don't mind sending him an email, but...
Sure.
As a general rule, are we informed to be emailed? I know David recently has kept us in the loop on town meetings and what's going on with things that might involve us. But in general, is that a pretty reliable source of? In the past, we have not gotten those emails. I have noticed it seems like, as of late, we're getting more of them, and it's across all of us, not just one of us.
Right.
Which is good. But to your point, I, you know, I, the last I saw in that special meeting was, I think, what you all saw. So if it's been canceled, perhaps it's in minutes maybe for a select board.
Right.
We just didn't actively seek out. So sometimes it's communication via that, that mechanism, like actually having to go and see what was deliberated and decided at a select board meeting.
And I, so I will definitely check on this, because just know, I was at a meeting, they didn't take me to vote, there was only one select board person there. They couldn't vote on anything, the select board would have done that. And then the department head meetings that I go to every month, this month, I was at a training in Malden, so I wasn't able to go. And they may have discussed it there, but I will email him. When I go to those, I try to bring that information back to you that you're going to email him this week.
Okay. All right. Fields.
So we have a draft proposal to CPA for $400,000 to do Phase 1. This meeting is estimated at a little over $500,000. And we'll be meeting with CPA, I believe, we got a meeting in late August, I think, August 28th. And so we'll prepare for that. I'm going to, we've got a, a group of town folk who want to, have been helping us put together the phases and advisory committee. And so we'll make sure to invite them to join us as well. And then I know Annie has been very...
Really excited about this.
Yeah, exactly.
In your packet, there is also some athletic fields improvement project. So a couple of things. One is, we know we're asking CPA for $400,000. Yes, I do. So I hope I have a disinformation in here. For $400,000. Andy Klipaki has been very helpful. He is... He is on Park and Rec. And Park and Rec did a project, the Fields, the Field of Dreams behind Hadley Elementary School. So they had something and they had these sponsorship levels of a single, of a double. I told Paul I had this, what I thought was a great idea, that instead of just completely using the same image, that we would do something different. So I thought we would use vegetables from a farm. I'm grateful for D-Rex who let me know in no uncertain terms, that was about the most ridiculous. Who gets to decide what vegetable is at the height and the low end. So this was just an idea that, that it's more, I wanted to talk to you about kind of the strategy around that $100,000 gap. And who, whom you would like to see as the face of it. And so, so one thing, this is very much a draft. I realized, I think last night, I said, yeah, I don't think, maybe what we want to get is some sort of pledge or commitment contingent upon the CPA providing money. Because I certainly don't want to collect a bunch of money. And then, I'm thinking positively, but I don't want to be in a position of having taken money from people and then for some reason the project doesn't get funded, right? So I thought about that, that this, it would probably, perhaps if we could get some sort of commitment there. And, and some of those commitments, I know, for example, if the Board of Trustees were willing to commit something, those commitments would carry a great tail of weight with the CPA. And perhaps even a letter of commitment from a business or something like that. So I just wanted to back away from actually having people send in money. And then when it comes to the money part of it, if most businesses want a tax deduction, a charitable donation, they're not going to get that if they donate to us. So it would make sense if we perhaps, if the school committee were comfortable with it, approached one of our philanthropic partners. So there's all kinds of folks with 501(c)(3)'s. Hadley Mothers Club, the PTO, the Hopkins Education Foundation. I know I'm missing Helping Hearts, thank you. So there are other, so that people could donate to earmark the money for this express purpose, but a business would then have the benefit of writing it off, which would encourage them to donate more money. So the question around that is, if, if that makes sense, then do we just do an open, who would like to do this for us? Is there a particular partner we want to approach? How do we, how do we do that? That was one of my questions for you. Then, of course, with that, I'm happy to schedule meetings personally. If that's something that you think is appropriate for the superintendent to do. Or do we also ask, in asking somebody if they would be that partner with us, are they also part of the Ask Committee? And, and then certainly we could include a flyer, some sort of flyer and get a way in on, I don't even know what any of these hawks are. Apparently there was a red-tailed hawk today that was making noise outside of the window. Decalled me over and said, Nessie, I have a sponsorship level. So feedback in, in general, but particularly around that idea of identifying a nonprofit. If, if you agree with the idea of not taking any money, just pledges or commitments in advance of having money in hand. And, and how, how do you recommend, what do you, what do you want to see in terms of that, that Ask going out and actually soliciting donations?
I like the idea of taking pledges and getting some kind of commitment and giving people back, you know, like some acknowledgement of their commitment, like a sponsorship letter or something so they know, you know, this is earmarked and we can count on it. But I also think, I feel like you're right, that there needs to be a face on this that is not necessarily you spending your time out there representing the fields expansion, but somebody else. I mean, I think that that time, I know that you are actively going to support it and be able to contribute positively, but I think that it would be good to have another, somebody leading this from the community that is able to, and has some, potentially some connections in town and able to represent it. I don't know who that is. I don't know if you have ideas from some of your preliminary meetings that you've already gathered as to who might be interested, or whether this is like a team of volunteers that need, you know, a lead, but still can rely on others. You know, the organization structure that I'm familiar with, with Helping Hearts, is that, you know, while Stacy is the founder and the lead, she has a board that she relies on, that each have their own duties according to the list of stuff that needs to get done based on their, the board's interests and the board members' area of expertise. So that's, I think, a helpful strategy to be able to divide and conquer, but also ultimately have somebody representing this moving forward. I'm sure there are other ways of doing this, but that's what I'm familiar with.
So we have this advisory group that's met. And I was thinking that what we could do is pull them together in a couple of weeks. So sometime before, we want to give them an update before the late August CPA meeting. And if we did it in early August, then we could help solidify some of these ideas. I think you're right, Annie, I think it'd be good to go to CPA with some letters of commitment. And I think we'd get those from a couple of organizations pretty quickly.
Some of them I think we can turn around very quickly. The bigger ones, Lowe's and others, just any business, might take a little bit longer, but.
With the trustees or something, some, some level of match. But I'd, I'd like to go to the advisory committee and give them an update. Here's what we are, here's what we're thinking about for fundraising, get the right ideas. And maybe one of them steps forward.
Yeah.
We talked a bit about that at the last meeting we had a month or so ago about that, but we didn't designate specific teams. So Eric has been doing a bit of the work with Annie. So is that, I guess that's the question, do we not want it to be a town or a school employee?
I'm fine with it being a school employee. I just, I just don't know that that's, speaking on, I don't know, I'm speaking on behalf of you, but that that's necessarily Annie's role in advocating for this project.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, Eric was taking a lot.
Yeah, Eric.
This is sort of your.
That makes total sense to me, to have somebody like Derek out there who's gonna see, you know, and the direct impact of this and can speak to the program.
I can see that structure working well, that Eric is sort of like running point for this, representing the school. And the, your committee and the key sort of towns have the connections and whose children will directly benefit, recognize the importance there. Really making, like opening the doors. And I can see that in some instances, it might take Annie being there to help close the sale.
Yeah.
But by and large, that Eric could be the point person. And I, part of what I'm thinking about, I'm happy to do anything that's helpful. I'm happy to meet with people. I think there's something of value also that, and I know Eric is very enthusiastic and willing to do anything he can to support the project, but to have people from town and not just school department employees. We also, we're big fans, but neither Eric nor I live here. And so I think there's something to be said for having community members.
And that's why I feel back to that group first.
And you mentioned too that you had a few town, town people that have been coming to those meetings who seem pretty invested and enthusiastic. And you might be surprised that even some of the people that we could potentially reach out to for a fund might even be interested in taking an active role in some of that stuff too. Because a lot of, some of the groups in towns and some of the boards in towns have a long history and would probably find a sentimental value behind being actively involved in that.
And I had mentioned, we have a lot of group partners. I also had talked specifically a bit about the Hopkins, Edward Hopkins, Hopkins Education Foundation. So these are the folks who originally did fundraising for the Bell. And they also are going to do the Celebration of Lights. And they're really looking to find ways to support the community and to support the schools. So they took that leftover money and created the Education Foundation. And they certainly are people with a long history in the community, have graduated from Hopkins, and they might be willing to help. I haven't asked them that, but.
I have a question. If I'm a business in town and I am interested in a Golden Hawk sponsorship, aside from the direct benefit of the tax, the tax benefit from working with the 501(c)(3), can you also tell me whether, like I can have a field named after the business? There's like a lotus field or a, you know.
Your name on the back.
Yes, exactly, a cecilene field, I don't know. Or a banner along the fence.
So I saw those as separate things, and so maybe we can commit those. We haven't had a chance. You talked about engraving on a plaque.
That we took directly from the Field of Dreams. So I was done before.
But I'd also always thought that we would have advertising. And we would just review our advertising policy, if it would allow us to. And whether that's on an annual basis. One of those thoughts was that annual basis would allow for assisting with maintenance.
And maybe it's, maybe it's annual after a certain period of time. So like we need this startup funding, so fields could be named after the highest donors. But then maybe there's banners for the second tier, and that stands for like two years, after which those banners are swapped out with people who are contributing in the third, fourth, and subsequent years. Or, you know, there's probably an array of different possible options. And it would be great to give sponsors something tangible like that.
They're gonna encourage them to donate a certain amount too, if they know ahead of time when you're presenting them with the idea.
It's coming out of their advertising.
Absolutely.
It's spent anyways.
I'm not sure how I feel about naming fields.
It's gotta be named something anyways, right? Field one, field two, you know, maybe make it 10K. And then, you know, it's a home depot field. I'd be happy to go to the home depot field.
Those are great ideas. So that's what I think we can flush out just a little bit of some of these ideas and bring it to that advisory committee.
Okay.
I'm happy to help.
Okay.
Because I think we should get that scheduled for the next two weeks. I like this, I'm not sure what a sparrowhawk is.
Chicken hawk.
I don't know. I think the chicken hawk is being made up.
A chicken hawk is.
So chicken, it is, it is completely. But I thought it had to be in there.
A chicken hawk is not made up. It's a colloquial term for a kestrel.
Wow.
Well, it sounds like you're a chicken, you can only.
I love, stop your money and don't be a chicken.
There was no science behind it. And we did say, Paul is going to know. Paul is going to know.
He's gonna make sure the picture's right.
A sparrowhawk might be a colloquial term for a kestrel as well. So you have two kestrels.
No, you have chicken hawk and a sparrowhawk.
A golden hawk certainly isn't anything, but other than.
But the picture is most awesome.
Yeah, that eagle.
I'm pretty sure Cooper's hawk is missing an apostrophe.
Oh, yeah.
You wouldn't have had these problems, there are no apostrophes in trip.
The asparagus is gonna be the one option.
Oh.
You actually put a number on there.
Okay, anything else on the fields?
So I will get that scheduled.
While you're looking up hawk pictures.
The hawk pictures, yes, the most important. That's good, thank you. I enjoyed the segment.
Sure. All right, CES, here.
Great, so I went to the May meeting. And I wasn't here for June to report that CES, part of what we did at that last meeting was to form a committee to look at innovative, potential new offerings that serve the needs of the member districts. So I'm excited to volunteer and serve on that, or report back how that goes. I did, I think I was traveling for the last meeting that was in June. So the next one is in August and I'll report back.
Okay, great. And I'll just add before we get to the superintendent evaluation too. Some of us are traveling to the MASC conference this weekend, right? Yes. So a pretty good curriculum. It looks like though that it is in fact a choice, like you pick which sessions you're going to. It wasn't clear to me whether you were choosing or whether you were able to go to all of them. So looking forward to that and bringing back some information on things like finance and all sorts of stuff.
Thank you for going.
Yes.
You all went down?
I think we were three of us.
Yeah.
Terrific.
That's great.
Great, and Annie, you are going for Friday?
Definitely for Saturday and Friday. It depends, we may have interviews Friday, so that depends on what happens.
I don't know if this is the same one that Robie, Linda, and I went with Donna Moyer years back at the MASC Annual Conference, but it was tremendous, such a great.
No, it's not.
It's like a summer redux.
Yeah, it's not the larger one that you went to in November. This is a small one, just a, yeah.
It's, it's close, it's convenient.
It's terrific.
Yeah, with, I think, very relevant content, especially, I mean, whether you're, you've been on the committee forever or whether you're new, it's like, to me, it's like anybody can learn from all of these topics.
That's true.
That was great. And it's not that far down the road.
Right.
Okay, superintendent evaluation.
Were you gonna talk about that or am I?
No, so, yes. We are going to evaluate you.
And not in this moment, in case you guys.
I wanted to prepare her.
Better, she knew how to use apostrophes. So last year what we do, superintendent evaluation is, is we post a meeting. However, what we did last year was we had, rather than try to squeeze it into a normal business meeting, school committee members came to the meeting and I put together artifacts. So what you evaluate me on are the goals that, the goals that we have for me and for the district. And I provide you with evidence of progress that are made on those goals. And you also evaluate me on the four standards of effective practice from an educational administrator that the Department of Education has put forth. And what I make sure that you have in advance of that meeting are a list of the kinds of artifacts that you can actually look at. I don't scan in the entire binder to each one of you, but there are examples of. So for example, you evaluate me on data-informed decision-making. So I might include in there a PowerPoint that I've given to the school committee on student academic performance. There's just a range of things that are in the artifact binder. And, and then you provide me with feedback on my performance, and those are recorded in minutes that are then made available to the public. You have, what I appreciate about that process is I really like the fact that there's no anonymity involved with it. And personally, I would say that's really important to me, just as it would be here in, in the school. Like a teacher or a principal would find it outrageous if they received anonymous feedback, good or bad, and they'd come right to you guys and say, you gotta tell her to fix that, that doesn't work. So I like the direct communication. And it's one document, so the school committee comes to consensus. At the end of the day, it's one, essentially you determine if the superintendent's performance is exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. All of that conversation gets mushed into one word, and you speak with one voice on that. And the document is a public document. It's interesting, it's not like the private sector. And then it's in the meeting or public meetings, and all superintendent evaluations are public documents.
And we would bring that one rating then to whatever the appropriate meeting is.
And then after, at the school committee meeting, you would read out.
Read that rating, yeah. A question I had for you was, do, and I've seen this on some of the MASC mail lists or questions, do past school committee members, thinking Linda and Robie in particular, because they've worked with you, are they part of this activity?
No, they wouldn't be. It's your, it's this school committee.
Okay.
Yeah, it's these, yeah.
Okay.
Who I work for.
Great, so it sounds like in advance we'll get the reminder of the goals, the criteria.
Yes.
And you'll have examples available. We'll get a meeting scheduled where we'll talk there through those criteria and come to consensus for each of the, you know, the feedback that we have, the feedback we want to share in that forum, samples we may want to look at in that forum, come to the decision on each of those ratings, right, for each of the goals. And then we step back and come to an overall rating, which is what is shared out.
And what you will receive from me in advance, so you won't receive that binder, just like you said, you'll receive the standards of what the standards of effective practice are. And you'll receive a copy of my goals, and I'll have attached a narrative of, just a very brief of whether I think that the goal was met or we've made progress on the goal. And then you'll have actual artifacts that you can look at in the meeting. If you're asking any questions.
And what's it?
Yeah.
What's the target?
I will send out, unless you want to look for a time right now, I can send out something for, for people. I can do it via email and see when, when it works for folks, what works for folks.
Were you targeting like in the next month to try to bring this to the August meeting?
If we can make it work. And if it's, and if it doesn't work, but I'd certainly try for the next month. If it doesn't work for people, then.
And just because maybe it escaped me, I got lost. And just because maybe it escaped me, I got lost a little bit in the process because I've never done it before. It's a meeting with just the five of us?
It's an open meeting that anybody can come to, but we posted it, last year it worked for school committee to do the meeting in the morning in my office. They did it, that's what worked for.
But anybody's able to come to it? Is it recorded?
No, it's not recorded. I would take a table call, but I do this.
Yeah.
I, I would propose, I don't know if August tends to work for you guys, but August is a month, I have a self-imposed travel ban. I would like to get as much done in August, so as to be able to contribute to the process if possible. So if we're willing to meet in August, we'll also come to a conclusion on the evaluation by the next meeting, and we can address it, tidy up, put it to bed.
I think we come out of that meeting with a conclusion.
Great.
So.
Let's do it.
So, yes, we can. And we should talk about when our.
Exactly, August and August is when I do my job.
You have a self-imposed travel.
I have a self-imposed travel.
Let's talk about when the August meeting even is, because we don't.
For the school.
August 28th is what it typically is. Oh, okay, perfect. So August 28th, that's the last Monday. Does that work for everybody to schedule to meet in their regular?
Is that after the school year begins?
First day is the 30th.
It's for staff. So children aren't back yet.
Well, first day at Hopkins anyways is 30th.
That's correct, across the district. For kids is on Wednesday, staff is back for 28th.
Yeah, 28th.
So that's just regular school committee.
So back up from there, Annie, how much, if we can meet the, I'm actually out the 15th through the 23rd. That's a vacation, travel, not a bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, same place. Are you here the 14th?
I am.
Great. The 14th work?
Works for me.
It's the one day of the month I'm here.
Sure. And what time would you like to meet? Would you be in my office, or maybe you can meet whatever works for people? Like the morning?
Before your work day?
You can do it in the morning.
Morning would be awesome.
I don't know if I can make a morning. I mean, I can, I can probably do as early as like 4:00. I just don't know, I, I would have to check my work schedule, which I don't have on me, to see if I could.
I can do four.
Yeah, I can do four.
I can do four.
So August 14th, that's.
So what are we calling this?
Superintendent Evaluation. Typically, we've done it in the superintendent's office.
How long has it typically, typically taken us in the process?
So we get the information in advance, so we have time to think about it in advance, but then.
I think we spent two hours last time.
Yeah. I plan on no more than two hours.
Yeah.
I forget how many goals you have.
Let's try for another half.
That would be awesome.
Okay, great. It's fine with me.
8:14, August 14th, 4:00 PM.
And how far in advance would we get the information?
I have it all together, so I'll have everything but the binder, and you are welcome at any point if you want to contact me. I'm, I'm on vacation from Saturday, the 19th, I think it is, until the 23rd. Going to look at an eclipse, the solar eclipse.
Yes.
Where are you going?
Where are we going? This is Tom's birthday present. I kind of went to Ash's. I said, the sun, doesn't it come out every day? It's his birthday present.
It's a big deal.
We're going to, it is. I learned after I made that comment, it is actually a big deal. So it is, I think we're going on my own. We're flying into Denver, I think we're flying.
Okay.
But, so I have a binder. I will have the report to you and the kind of the questions, what you're rating on. It will, for, we will discuss each goal, and we, so when I send you this sheet of paper, you're going to say, wow, she said that. We only come to one rating. Discuss these ones, and then you mush it down to one word. And I have the brief narrative written, and you're welcome at any point in time to shoot me an email if you want to come and look at the artifacts in advance. I'm happy to do that with you.
And this is a good opportunity to provide feedback, you know, positive, negative, anything that is helpful, I think, is, is a good, it's a good forum for that, and to be able to tie it back to goals is always helpful.
Absolutely. So we just have one action item, accepting $250 donation from Dr. Shaw, we're very grateful for that. North Pediatrics, North Hampton Pediatrics.
Area Pediatrics.
Area Pediatrics, thank you.
For the difficulty?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we just have to accept that.
Motion to accept the donation of $250.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, yes, thank you very much, Dr. Shaw. Okay, and we've got our next meeting scheduled. I think we're good to go.
When's the next school committee meeting?
So the next school committee meeting is the 28th, August 28th, at 6:00 PM. Will be our last trial at 6:00 PM. And see how that works out, and August 14th will be our superintendent evaluation. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Oh, wait, do I have to do a roll call?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I have a ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
I almost got through.
Good job.
But for YouTube.